More than four and a half times our per pupil expenditure amount. So, our per pupil expenditure amount is $16,000 and change. So, if we said roughly $15,000. So, for every student that we sent, we spent more than $67,000 and a half dollars on. That amount of money, the difference, if we, let's say the student cost of service was $100,000, and four and a half times the $15,000 per pupil expenditure was 67 and a half, that roughly $33,000 should be reimbursed to the town. That's the statute. Unfortunately, there's only a pool of money that's set aside, and it's not fully reimbursed. So, the state, on average, has reimbursed us about 72% of that. So, of the $33,000 we're supposed to receive, we're really only receiving $20,000 in that, you know, in that scenario. So, this is a legislative priority for us as a community, even though we do a really tremendous job managing that cost. We could use that full funding to better provide support services for our students.
Thank you, Mr. Solan. So, for us to take any action, we would need a motion, I suppose. But, we'll go through the remainder of the items here, and if there's any discussion, we can have that. What came out of the Legislative Committee was a request that our legislative representatives work to restore ECS funding to budgeted levels and ensure that communities and education leaders have a voice as we explore special education funding solutions. So, sort of a short way of summing up what you just said, Mr. Solan. Next was youth mental health access support for social emotional learning resources. And I believe this conversation was about part of the anti-bullying bill that was passed in the last session that I believe had to do with increased administrative burden for our school system, as well as, I guess, discussion on suicidal ideation. And, I don't know, we had a discussion about that. Ms. Solano, I don't know if you want to expand on that at all, or, I don't know.
I would say just that those concerns are beginning to grow, and that we are continually looking for ways in which to address those needs.
And I would agree with that. So, what we, what came out of that was that these two statements that we have here, that we respectfully request that our legislative representatives continue to learn more about youth mental health and work with medical insurance and education professionals to provide greater access to treatment. We respectfully request that legislators consider strategies for funding social emotional learning and mental health resources for school systems. So, that sounded good to me, anyway. For school start times, we had discussed the state of the state on this issue, I suppose. And Ms. Harrigan has been a great advocate for school start times. And since there hasn't, this board at least hasn't reached consensus on school start times, I guess for now, we would like to request the legislators at least protect the local authority over school start times by not adopting a state law mandating communities to adhere to specific times, thereby leaving us the option to do our own homework and to decide when and where that would best fit our school system. Ms. Harrigan, would you like to add anything to that?
I could add something to that. I'm not sure that, that this needs to be stated this way, because even if the legislature was going to be working towards this initiative on adopting a state mandate for school start times, it would be done in such a way that it would give us time out into the future to, for communities to be able to adhere to that. And so, I would have to think about it for a little bit, but I'm not so sure that I would agree with this, with sending this, this part of the statement, too. Although I do acknowledge that it does need to be done, community by community, very thoroughly and looked into for the benefit of the community that's, that's looking into it. That I do agree with.
Thank you. Let's see. We had, we discussed several other issues, including binding arbitration. Mr. Solan, did you want to expand, expand on that at all?
Sure. I know that this was a topic of conversation at the Legislative Committee meeting. Binding arbitration is, you know, something that we must adhere to with negotiations coming up this summer. I know it's in the forefront of members of the board of their mind. I think this is something that perhaps needs a little bit more conversation, perhaps in Legislative Committee, before we make firm requests of the legislators. I would also lump into that teacher pension reform. I think, you know, that's really a huge state issue. I know that I had shared, teacher pension doesn't necessarily cost Cheshire out-of-pocket money, because our teachers, actually all certified professionals that belong to the state teacher retirement system, which includes me, Ms. Solano, all of our teaching staff, pay eight and a quarter percent into the TRB on an annual basis. Where it does cost the, the community is there's a huge unfunded, underfunded pension liability that the state has for the state teacher retirement system. So, as that liability grows, as the state has to dedicate more and more resources to that, that liability, they have less money to send to municipalities. So, there is a cost to all of us. We all bear that cost. And, so that's something that I know, you know, the state is obviously aware of, and we would probably need to consider what sort of recommendations we might make in that respect, too.
Thank you. To, to wrap up the report here from Legislative Committee, we also discussed prevailing wage. We discussed a hope that the legislator could, legislature could consider pursuing an increase in the upper threshold of prevailing wage. I personally don't exactly understand what that means. I know someone else at the meeting did.
Pass that off to Mr. Masiana.
Yeah, so.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. In a nutshell, prevailing wage applies to municipalities and, you know, boards of ed. Whenever we do a project, if it's a renovation of $100,000 or more, you have to use prevailing wages. And it increases, the bottom line, it increases our costs probably 20 to 25% on a project. For new construction, you know, such as the storage building we built, the threshold is $400,000. So, the idea would be to raise those thresholds well above where they are now, so that we can complete projects, still complete them effectively, but at a lower cost to, you know, in our case, to the schools. And I know certainly on the town side, you know, they would support an increase as well to the thresholds for prevailing wage. So, state law, that projects that exceed those thresholds have to, have to be paid at the higher prevailing wage rates. And there's a whole administrative burden that's also placed on the project to comply with the prevailing wage submissions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And finally, we had a discussion on vehicle-to-grid. And this was a discussion about the future of electric school buses. Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Adam. With regard to vehicle-to-grid, I actually was at, I was at a meeting this past weekend about net-zero energy schools, and I had spoken with somebody who is extremely knowledgeable about it. And when I requested this as a concept, I didn't fully understand it. There basically is nothing like this in the state of Connecticut, but there is a relatively quiet pilot program that's going on right now with Eversource, is my understanding. So, there's no enabling legislation required. I thought there was, I misunderstood it. But, they're doing it slowly. The utilities like to move slowly. And so, I just withdraw this, my request for this at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White.
So, if I may, the, if, I mean, we talked about the variety of items here, minus, you know, binding arbitration, teacher pension, and now vehicle-to-grid. If people are, you know, comfortable, if the group is comfortable with this, it doesn't necessarily require a motion or a vote, I can forward this to our legislative representatives. And certainly, you know, as the session moves on, the information that I've sent in years past is specific to pending legislation. So, the session started today. So, this just kind of, I could send this to our representatives, kind of put things on the radar, and then we can circle back and send additional information, if we choose. So, I'm just throwing that out there for your discussion, if you'd like to do that. I could certainly do that. If you say, yeah, you know, let's hold off on all this, we can do that, too. But, it's, I mean, it's really up to the board at this point.
Well, being this is a special meeting, I don't think we can take any official action.
Well, if nothing is required.
Okay, so if nothing is required, then...
I mean, if you said, it's not necessarily an action of the board. So, we're not, like, forming a resolution, which would be a specific action that we would have to do in another meeting. But, if you said to me, you know, hey, we like this information, go ahead and send it on, I could just do that. That's, that's not a, a board action. I've done this in the past without board approval. Like, I mean, I've shared things with you, but...
Sure.
It doesn't require formal board approval to express our opinion.
I would be for holding on to this for a while and mulling some things over, because there are three of the, one, two, three, four, five, three of the six items that seem to have differing opinions, or maybe I kind of feel like I might need more information. The vehicle-to-grid point that Tim was talking about, I actually, you know, I'd like, I, I think it would be great to look into that more and see what's out there, because I also have heard from people who are really versed on this topic. I kind of agree that, do we want to send this as, like, one of our initiatives to the legislature? I, I don't think so, because I feel like we're not there yet. But neither do I want to send this statement, as it's written, on the school start times to the legislature, because it, it doesn't seem to be stated in a, in a way that, that I think shows at least how I feel about school start times, because it sounds negative to me. And I think there's a better way to put it forward that sounds like, yeah, we do want to look into school start times. And we would like, I mean, I think it would benefit us and all communities to have the legislature start looking into it as well for, for the state level. I'm not saying that I want them to mandate our start times, but I sure would like to see the conversation at the state level. I really would. And this, this part of this resolution makes it sound like we don't want them to interfere in any way whatsoever. And I think that they're central to the, to the bigger conversation. I, and I don't really understand what the statement on binding arbitration is. It doesn't seem to really be saying anything. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, it's, it's not. And, and so, I think really the items that I'm suggesting are considered are the excess cost sharing, youth mental health, social emotional learning...
And the prevailing wage.
And prevailing wage now...
I agree with those.
Is a, you know, just throw it out there, put it on the radar, and then through Legislative Committee, we can decide, particularly when legislation is introduced, we can weigh in on that. And I, I know that our representatives, all of whom I've dealt with in the past, are very responsive, as a matter of fact, eager to hear from us once that legislation has been proposed. So, at least this kind of, as Adam, you know, mentioned, the excess cost piece is something that many districts across the state are, you know, putting on the radar. It allows us to do that as well. And then, we can meet in Legislative Committee. And then, ultimately, if there's something that we feel really strongly about, whether it be excess cost, or SEL, or anything, we can come back and formulate a resolution through Legislative Committee to, to share. But, this is just, you know, like I said, those three items in particular, if people are comfortable with me sending this sort of information on now as kind of an initial contact, I'll do that.
I would agree with that.
I agree with that also.
So, the, the way the agenda is set, it says possible action. If we, if we want to vote on it, I mean, as far as I know, we can, even though it's a special meeting, it mentioned that there.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah, we, we could vote on it if you, if you want to, yeah, because it does say possible action. But, we're not gonna, I mean, I don't think we're prepared to write a resolution tonight. And typically, what in our bylaws, the action in a situation like this, as it relates to legislation, would be a formal resolution. I just don't know that we're prepared to do that this evening.
Sure, okay. And, and I don't mean to push for that right now, but I do want to make two points. First of all, with, with, with regard to the pension reform, this is something that's been on my mind for probably decades now. Being a little bit more specific than what's written here, this is based on feedback I've gotten from my friends over the past two decades, who are teachers. We have 400 teachers in the school system. One or two of them, in my opinion, would probably be bad apples out of 400. Most of them are going to be really great teachers. Some of them, based on my own experience in the school system, a small number, probably, in, in my opinion, there are probably some people who will be there for the pension, with people being incentivized to be there for the maximum 37 and a half years. My preference would be to reorganize the way it's weighted, and basically, front-load it a bit, because I've spoken with a number of my friends who are teachers, and basically, there is a certain number of teachers who, they've described it as burnout, and they don't feel that, they feel they're there primarily for the pension, for the salary, whatever it might be, the pension being one piece of it. And by resetting or reweighting the pension, I think it would be likely that some of those teachers who don't really want to be teachers anymore, and I'm, I'm saying this is a small number of teachers, but there are a few, I imagine, they would not be as interested in staying in the classroom, and they may very well just cash out earlier. And I think that would be, provide a better outcome for the students overall. So, when I'm talking about pension reform, I'm talking about changing the way it's weighted. It's not a, I'm not talking about reducing the pension or anything like that, just a reweighting of it. Also, with regard to pension reform, yeah, I don't want them pushing it down to us, they need to fund it. This is the state, as far as I'm concerned. And the second point, and this is something I thought about when I was on the town council, I would, I think it would be appropriate if we, as elected officials, were looking not only at the spending side, but also at the taxing side. I think local boards of education should be a taxing authority independent of the town councils, local legislative bodies. And I'm not pushing for a vote on this tonight, we don't need to do that. You could take, because I know it's not going anywhere either. I don't expect it to be going anywhere in this, in this session, but I'd be comfortable with you bringing forward the points that you made, particularly because I think that there, I think that there is the potential for some changes at the state level, such as with excess costs, if local boards of education are getting behind it.
Thank you. If I may, Mr. Chair, I just want to build a little bit on what you talked about in terms of the state teacher retirement system. For those folks who maybe don't understand, it's 37 and a half years to reach retirement for full benefits. Now, when, each year that you teach, you basically get 2% credit towards your pension, and what Mr. White's talking about is front-loading, I guess, like, 3% early on. I think the state would probably be reticent to do that, because it increases their liability, It may support teachers deciding to retire, perhaps at an earlier age, but there are certainly other strategies that local municipalities can use if they consider that to be an issue. I know that you were not speaking of any individual teacher or employee in the Cheshire Public Schools, and I know you didn't graduate last year, so it's been a few years, and I, and I, I just want to be clear, too.
Thirty this year.
Yeah. So, you know, I will say, you know, I'm constantly receiving validation about the incredible work that our staff does. You know, yesterday was another example. We issued a press release about the district performance index. It's the highest it's been. It's a, it's a metric that the state uses to assess the quality of a, a school system by looking at, I think it's like 13 different variables, from, you know, arts participation and athletic, physical fitness, to academic, numerous academic measures for both students, all students and high-need students. So, you know, our combination of very well-seasoned staff and newbies seems to be working very well for our school system. I know you weren't questioning that, and not, you know, picking out individual teachers, but it's a global issue that we're addressing, and I just wanted to kind of provide a little bit more context to that. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, sorry for my lack of clarity on that.
No, no, no.
Lack of context or background.
Mr. Solan, just a question for my own edification with the, all these pension reform initiatives, is there any push, any direction toward a defined contribution plan? Are they considering it, or is that just a non-starter?
I think that ideas get bandied about periodically. That's certainly an idea that has been kicked about, but, you know, real momentum toward any sort of change, I haven't seen that.
Is this something that boards of education could somehow coalesce around to...
I think it would take more than boards of ed. You know, CCM, the Connecticut Conference Municipalities, groups like that may have more influence, but I think boards could, but it's a pretty big lift.
Okay, thank you.
So, I believe, just so we can sort of end this agenda item, I think it's safe to say that we'll support...
Yeah.
...the excess cost, youth mental health, and binding arbitration.
No, the prevailing...
I'm sorry, I'm, yes, I'm sorry, prevailing wage.
Mr. Chair?
My mistake, my mistake.
Can I go back to one item on prevailing wages? Just want to correct one thing I said. The threshold for new construction is $1 million, not $400,000. The threshold for renovation is still $100,000. So, if they were, you know, just a thought is maybe put some definition around what we would like to see the increase be. It's a million for new, but it's the renovation that, that's really the more pressing issue for us typically. So, there could be a suggestion, 500,000, a million, whatever, might be palatable.
What would you suggest for raising the new construction, from a million to 1.5, or are you okay with one?
I, I would go after the renovation one. I think that's the more, that's the one that's more difficult for us to work with these days, because a lot of the work that we do renovation-wise is well above the $100,000. And I don't know what the best strategy would be, raise it to be equal to the $1 million for new. I don't know how saleable that is, so maybe the $500,000 is a thought.
Tim, then, Anne.
Thank you. So, I strongly agree with requesting the prevailing wage change. I suggest we mirror whatever the town council did, because they just voted on this, in advocating for an increase in the prevailing wage. So, I would just default to what they had requested.
I was going to say something different. Do we have to actually specify the dollar amount, or can we just be less binding than that, and, and just suggest that we'd like to see it for, for, what is it, the construct, not the new construction?
Renovation.
Renovation, thank you. It's been a long day. That we just would like to see the prevailing wage for renovation increased.
I mean, ultimately, it's up to the board to decide, but if, personally, I think we should put a dollar amount out there, and I think...
And do you know what the town council amount is? I mean, did they?
I don't, we could find out, though.
Yeah, no, I, I saw the minutes, but I didn't see a number in there, other than the $100,000 number with a request to increase it. I know that from when I was actually on the town council, from what I recall, we were normally requesting the renovation to be increased from $100,000 to $400,000, but I didn't see that in the minutes, so...
Yeah, but I think you guys trust me to just, like, take a look at the town council. If there's not, I'll talk to Vin, we'll come up with a number, and just throw it out there.
Try, try for what's achievable.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. That'll conclude the Legislative Committee report. As some may notice, this is a, a committee that we've had for a while, we haven't really used it all that much, and we plan to use it going forward, as Mr. Solan said, to sort of work out even a joint testimony that speaks for the board in Hartford, when the time, if and when the time comes, that, that's necessary. Okay, moving to the next item. Mr. Martelli, do you have a motion for me?
I do. I'd like to make a motion. I move that we enter into executive session to discuss pending litigation in Ocendo Lopez versus Cheshire Board of Education et al., to include Mr. Solan and Mr. Masiana.
Second.
Second by Ms. Harrigan. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Against? All right, it's unanimous. Thank you. Go on to executive session. Thank you, audience, for your patience. Mr. Martelli, do you have a statement, a motion?
I'd like to enter back into a normally scheduled special meeting of the Board of Education.
Thank you. Oh, um, do we have to make a...
Second.
Oh, second, thank you. Got my head back in there. All in favor to come out of executive session? Okay, I would like to make a motion. Move that the Cheshire Board of Education consents to the settlement reached by the Town's Insurance Company in the case of Ocendo Lopez versus Cheshire Board of Education slash Russ Hinckley, excuse me. Is there...
Second.
Is there a second, Mr. Martelli? We have discussion? Starting discussion?
I apologize for the pause. This, the motion, is, the motion's in front of us. Yeah, so I, I plan to support this motion. You know, in general, settlements I'm never particularly happy about, I don't think... I'm never particularly happy about. I don't think many people are, but I'm comfortable supporting it. The one thing that I just want to highlight that is a concern for me is I have a feeling that, to a certain extent, there is something of nondisclosure here, and everything that relates to that post-Harvey Weinstein, me too, just leaves me with great unease. But my understanding is a lot of this information, a lot of the information related to this is publicly available, so that I'm going to support the motion.
Thank you. Is there any other comment? Seeing none? All in favor? It appears to be unanimous. Okay. Motion is approved. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
He's so moved.
Is there a second? Fake. All in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you.